I'd like to convene the Minneapolis Park and Recreation Board here on October 23rd. With our secretary, please call the roll.
Commissioner Alper.
Present.
Commissioner Mens.
Here.
Commissioner Musich. Absent. Commissioner Olson.
Here.
Commissioner Rucker.
Here.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Here.
Commissioner Thompson.
Here.
Vice President Abeni.
Here.
President Forni.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. I'll take a motion to approve our agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? That action carries. That action carries all the minutes from October 1st.
I'll move our minutes from the meeting of October 1st, 2024.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? That action carries. By the way, I called to mention that Commissioner Musich is unable to make today's. Do we have any reports from outside boards and committees and commissions? Anybody have anything to say? Okay, I will then report in about the Blue Line. The Blue Line did receive municipal consent, so it is moving forward as far as the process. We believe that probably by the first of the year, we might be hearing as far as the comments that we made regarding the environmental impact statement. My understanding is that staff has been very involved in that conversation and appreciate it. So, yeah, it's interesting to have heard the comments from the various communities and everything. And basically, I think majority of people feel that it is a historic investment in an under-invested area. So it's pretty powerful that that is moving forward. Grateful to do that. And I know this is not the appropriate place for me to say this, but I am going to take the liberty of saying, we have so many wonderful staff here. In case nobody heard, we won the gold medal. Wow, I got a little bit choked up there. Anyway, this is a really, really powerful thing. I just need you all to know, I was very glad that I went down to Atlanta to be there. And I'm still recovering in its own way because it is such a powerful message. Yes, we as commissioners, we set a vision, but these people out there, they're the ones who have made it happen. And I have to give a big shout out to Ben Johnson, who, what was it, 2,001 words?
2,500.
Oh, 2,500 words, okay. Application was really powerful, really pointing out all the marvelous things that all of you have worked so hard on. This is truly a job performance review that was given to you by other professional park people. And to me, that's a really powerful message that you guys are doing a great job, and I just so applaud you. So, when I, please, everybody applaud them. It was really great. And I also have to point out that I did attend the two seminars that staff gave, and those were very, very powerful. Leslie Vincent is here, and really, you did an amazing job. And I did not know that we had chickens, a chicken program that is actually in the parks, and that was a really fun thing to see the delivery of that. So, once again, I'm very, very proud of it. We will get the physical evidence at one point in time, but we won't get into that now. So, anyway, upon that, then, I will move then to the consent agenda. Anybody like to move that, please?
I'll move the consent agenda as a slate. Resolution is 2024-207, 208, and 209.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? That action carries. Okay, on to then our planning committee.
On behalf of the planning committee, I'd like to move Resolution 2024-185, Resolution granting access and utility license agreement to Centerpoint Energy for an underground natural gas line along West Lake Harriet Parkway located within the Minneapolis Chain of Lakes Regional Park and collecting appropriate fees associated with the license agreement.
Second. Thank you. Any questions to that? Not seeing any lights. All those in favor, please signify by saying, is this a roll call? Okay.
I believe so.
Okay. Secretary, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Alper.
Aye.
Commissioner Mens.
Aye.
Commissioner Musich. Absent. Commissioner Olson.
Aye.
Commissioner Rucker.
Aye.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Aye.
Commissioner Thompson.
Aye.
Vice President Abeni.
Aye.
President Forni.
Aye.
You have eight ayes, one absent.
Then action carries. On to our next resolution. By the way, I think every single item is a roll call.
I'd like to move Resolution 2024-194, Resolution approving encroachment license for use of 424 square feet of land in front of the subject property at 2851 East Lake of the Isles Parkway, encroaching upon parkland at East Lake of the Isles Parkway within Minneapolis Chain of Lakes Regional Park and reducing encroachment fees based upon quantitative and qualitative betterments.
Second. Any questions? Not seeing any lights. All those, excuse me, secretary, please call the roll.
Commissioner Alper.
Aye.
Commissioner Mens.
Aye.
Commissioner Musich. Absent. Commissioner Olson.
Aye.
Commissioner Rucker.
Aye.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Aye.
Commissioner Thompson.
Aye.
Vice President Abeni.
Aye.
President Forni.
Aye.
You have eight ayes, one absent.
That action carries. On to our next resolution.
I'd like to, on behalf of the planning committee, move Resolution 2024-198, Resolution authorizing the execution of parkland development and easement agreement with Wall Development Company LLC for parkland located within the Grand Rounds Missing Link Regional Trail.
Second. Thank you. Okay, I see a light from Commissioner Mens. Right ahead.
If there's any staff out there who could give me a little bit of context as how this might play into the new funding for the Grand Rounds? Is there any, how this plays into that piece?
Welcome Senior Planner, Chris Jensen.
Thank you. Good evening, President Forni, Commissioner Mens. I'm happy to give a presentation, but to answer your question regarding funding, so the Park Acquisition Opportunity Fund that is available through Metropolitan Council is a separate pot of funding that we plan to apply for a grant through that program to pay for the park, the acre park, that is separate from the bonding and then the Parks and Trails funding that is currently allocated to the Grand Rounds Missing Link. So it doesn't, it's not currently in our CIP, the funding that we plan to use for purchase of the park. However, construction of any park amenities in, along the trail corridor in the acre park would come out of our capital improvement program, you know, likely in a couple of years when we start construction.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Seeing no other lights, then, secretary, please call the roll on this item as well.
Commissioner Alper.
Aye.
Commissioner Mens.
Aye.
Commissioner Musich. Absent. Commissioner Olson.
Aye.
Commissioner Rucker.
Aye.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Aye.
Commissioner Thompson.
Aye.
Vice President Abeni.
Aye.
President Forni.
Aye.
You have eight ayes, one absent.
That action carries. On to our next resolution.
On behalf of the planning committee, I'd like to move Resolution 2024-199, Resolution approving temporary occupancy under Section 4F of the Transportation Act of 1966 for Franklin Avenue Reconstruction Project adjacent to and within PV Park.
Second. Thank you. Any questions on that? Not seeing any lights. Secretary, please call our roll again.
Commissioner Alper.
Aye.
Commissioner Mens.
Aye.
Commissioner Musich. Absent. Commissioner Olson.
Aye.
Commissioner Rucker.
Aye.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Aye.
Commissioner Thompson.
Aye.
Vice President Abeni.
Aye.
President Forni.
Aye.
You have eight ayes, one absent.
That action carries. On to our next resolution.
I'd like to move Resolution 2024-201, Resolution approving temporary occupancy under Section 4F of the Transportation Act of 1966 for intersection improvements at Richfield Road and West 36th Street adjacent to and within the Minneapolis Chain of Lakes Regional Park.
Second. I just want to comment that I've encouraged that if we can get a connection from this improvement to what is going to be, what, at Richfield Road, I think there's a connection that's going to be there to the maintenance shed. I encourage that connection to be completed there. Okay, not seeing any other lights. All those in favor, excuse me, secretary, please call the roll again.
Commissioner Alper.
Aye.
Commissioner Mens.
Aye.
Commissioner Musich. Absent. Commissioner Olson.
Aye.
Commissioner Rucker.
Aye.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Aye.
Commissioner Thompson.
Aye.
Vice President Abeni.
Aye.
President Forni.
Aye.
You have eight ayes, one absent.
That action carries. On to Administration and Finance Committee.
Yeah, on behalf of the Administration and Finance Committee, I would like to move Resolution 2024-195, Resolution approving a five-year concession lease agreement between the Minneapolis Park and Recreation Board and Froyo Soul LLC to serve as a food and beverage concessionaire at the Minneapolis Sculpture Garden beginning in 2025.
Second.
Any questions? Yes, Commissioner Schaefer.
Yes, I just would like to highlight that with this increased use, I would look forward to hopefully filling some of the horticultural vacancies that are open. The Sculpture Garden is usually the last of the jobs that are fulfilled as far as job postings. And so with the increased use of programming in this space, not only just a concessions agreement, but also a programming increase, it'll be important to make sure that we're taking care of the landscape to meet those additional needs.
Thank you. Not seeing any other lights. Secretary, please call our roll.
Commissioner Alper.
Aye.
Commissioner Mens.
Aye.
Commissioner Musich. Absent. Commissioner Olson.
Aye.
Commissioner Rucker.
Aye.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Aye.
Commissioner Thompson.
Aye.
Vice President Abeni.
Aye.
President Forni.
Aye.
You have eight ayes, one absent.
That action carries. Commissioner Mens, if you can turn your mic on when you're voting, great. Okay, the next resolution, please.
Also from Admin Finance, I'd like to move Resolution 2024-197, Resolution authorizing the execution of a purchase agreement with Wall Development Company LLC for the acquisition of parkland located within the Grand Rounds Missing Link Regional Trail for $3,437,404 and other considerations.
Second.
Any questions? Not seeing any lights. Secretary, please call the roll.
Commissioner Alper.
Aye.
Commissioner Mens.
Aye.
Commissioner Musich. Absent. Commissioner Olson.
Aye.
Commissioner Rucker.
Aye.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Aye.
Commissioner Thompson.
Aye.
Vice President Abeni.
Aye.
President Forni.
Aye.
You have eight ayes, one absent.
That action carries. Okay, now on to our Recreation Committee where we don't have to do a roll call.
On behalf of the Recreation Committee, I move Resolution 2024-168, Resolution approving the First Amendment to Umbrella Shared Use Agreement between Minneapolis Public Schools and Minneapolis Park and Recreation Board.
Any questions?
Second.
Well, thank you. Any questions? Oh, Commissioner Mens.
Is there anybody to do a presentation on this resolution about how the agreement may impact future relationships with the Minneapolis Park Board and the school system?
I know that Assistant Superintendent Cal isn't here, but Acting Director Barsh is here.
President Forni, Commissioner Mens, this resolution is specific to the shared use sites. It doesn't address teachers.
Oh, that was my question around the shared use sites, the definition, and I talked to Director, or Senior Planner, Arvidson about this a bit. So, the shared sites are only, there's a little bit of confusion for me around what is actually designated as a shared site and what's not, because it's only regarding land use. And I don't know if, there's a lot of places out there that weren't on the list that I saw that, and maybe explaining to the board how that shared use is not really, it doesn't really appear to be what you would see. Like Marcy was not on the list. Obviously, there's some shared uses there. So I'd like a little bit of clarification around like, how this is going to change the dynamic. I saw that there was a lot of councils that were going to be set up for those groups, like three people from the Park Board and three people from the School Board. So I'm interested in how that's going to play out functionally between the School Board and the Park Board, and what's going to be different. And maybe you can answer that question, Acting Director or Superintendent.
President Forni, Commissioner Mens, I'm filling in for Assistant Superintendent Cal tonight, and that might be a question for her. I can tell you that the 16 sites that we're referring to already had a shared use agreement, and we have shared land there.
But at other sites, we don't have shared land?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
Deputies Intendant and Wrinkle.
Thank you, President Forni and Commissioner Mens. So these are really focusing on areas where we're sharing a building-type facility, not necessarily permitting each other or doing activities on specific land pieces. This is really going to be focused on our relationships around those areas where we have a facility that we're sharing in some way. So that's why if it's something where we're just using each other's land and not, it doesn't have a building associated with it, they're really not included on this list. So those would be different types of conversations that we would have with the School Board on it. And as Acting Director Barsh said, is that these are really kind of re-implementing ones that we've had that are probably nearing 20 to 30 years old at this point. Those site councils are really intend to bring this into a space where we're looking at the staff who are on-site, being empowered to resolve issues that happen on-site. And we're establishing then a review process that allows the head of recreation and the, I can't remember what the individual's name is at the School Board, that title, but that can also be handled at a staff level. So we're pretty excited about these new kind of templates and all the information that's been collected to do it. If there are additional types of agreements, we need to handle other types of sites that we can certainly talk about. This doesn't preclude that by any means.
Well, it's encouraging to see some more work on the relationship between the School District and the Park Board. And, you know, as many of you might not know, Acting Director Barsh is actually working on some work with the School Board right now, and has represented the Park Board in a very, very positive way, where I've heard that there are definitive changes in the way that our two organizations are working together. And I just wanted to make sure that you understood that that is out there, and that that positive perception between the schools and the parks is really important. So more shared use, more agreements like this where there's win-wins and we're not siloing. Please, thank you very much for working on this, all of you.
Okay, not seeing any other lights. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? That action carries. On then to Operations and Environment, Vice Chair Alper, if you would like to read the
Sure. I'd like to move Resolution 2024-192, Resolution adopting the City of Minneapolis, Minneapolis Park and Recreation Board, there's a type of stormwater management program, and authorizing the submittal of the stormwater management program to the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Any discussion? Not seeing any lights? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? That action carries. Well, we're on now to our presentation of the Superintendent's Recommended 2025, 2026 Take it away, Superintendent, and Director Weisman, and eventually Director Arvidson.
Okay, President Forni, Commissioners, thank you so much. It's a privilege to be here today presenting the Superintendent's, my recommended budget for 2025 and 2026. First, I'd like to start with this first slide, which really, I just love this, is that this is actually a go-kart racing that we competed against St. Paul. And I remember Andy Rodriguez, who's the director over there, challenged me this year, or this year. I couldn't make it, but we're going to get him next year. But I love this, I love this picture here, and I'm just grateful for it. But it just symbolizes really the great work that we do every year, or every day in this park system. And presenting this budget to you today is a real privilege. I also want to make sure that I thank the amazing people that are sitting back here in the room. They have worked tirelessly on this budget. You know, and I can name all of them, but I won't because it would take some time. But the folks that are sitting here, the directors, the managers, the staff have done incredible work, and we spent a lot of time on this, obviously, as you know, the backend kind of work around this is months and months of preparation bringing it before you today. So I want to personally thank them for their work, for their professionalism, their competency around this. They understood the assignment when I gave it to them. Prior to this budget, we knew it was going to be a challenging budget year, and they did wonderful work around this. I also want to give a special thank you to the executive team, real quickly with Deputy Superintendent Ringold, the Assistant Superintendent of Recreation, Mayne Cal, Assistant Superintendent of Barnum and Sherritt Ship, Jeremy Barrick, Assistant Superintendent of Planning, Michael Schroder. And, you know, those, I spend a lot of time with them, and they do amazing work, and grateful for that team that I sit with on a regular basis. I'm sure they're tired of seeing me sometimes, but I really think they're absolutely amazing. And a very special thank you to Director Weisman and Manager Paul Rosen. They are just outstanding, and I know that we've been in space with them, and we know their competence and their skill set is incredible, so thank you to them. And Julie, I know she takes vacation directly after this, and she's glad not to see me for a while. So we spend a lot of time together, so very grateful for her work. I'm teasing, she's wonderful. She likes me. And with that, let's get started. And I know we have 5:30 certain, so I'll try to get through this first section. So again, we're presenting the two-year budget this year, and this is really new for us. But again, this is the two-year budget cycle. This is the first cycle of the NPRB's two-year budget process. The NPRB has long relied on a multi-year plans to maintain our financial health. We always are very current update with that, but this is, again, this two-year budget cycle for us. The recommended budget I bring before you, I present to you, of course, the board approves as an annual budget each year. The 2025 budget amounts will be appropriated, and the 2026 planned budget amounts will be approved by the board in December of 2024. We'll get to the exact dates later in the presentation. In typical supplemental years, the NPRB will focus on re-forecasting revenues and assessing performance data. The 2026 planned amounts in this budget will be the basis for the 2026 supplemental budget. A quick reference to sort of our developing our 2025 to 2026 budget, this is just kind of a refresher. Back in April and May of 2024, the budget retreat discussions with the board, where it's some very clear things that were factors that were going to impact our six-year financial outlook and upcoming budgets. Those included, as we go through these, impacts of expanding citywide needs based free and reduced cost for youth programming, expenditure pressures due to wages, inflation and capital investment needs, system equity investment needs, and also closing the youth investment funding gap for '25 and '26, which I have repeatedly said this many times within the budget, when the ARPA ended in '24 this year, those gaps always existed. So of course, this board was very concerned about that, and that's why that is in here as far as factors. Also included is the final two years of our 2023 and 2026 strategic directions and goals to support our parks for all comprehensive plan. Also, we, of course, assess current service levels, which we've discussed, and maximum property tax levy. I also want to be very clear is that the board shared very much their commitments and towards very specific things that we heard during our budget process. And those areas were serving the youth of Minneapolis, very important, caring for our park assets, caring for the environment, identifying new funding sources for the park system, and investing in our employees. And continuing with our developing our 2025 to 2026 budget, obviously, the tax levy. So Commissioners voted to support a tax levy increase request to the Board of Estimate and Taxation, the BET, of a 10.0% property tax, and contained four distinct elements that this board brought forward to us as staff. Maintain current service levels for wage adjustments and inflation. System equity investments need to provide the standard level of service for Greco Park. Citywide needs based free and reduced cost for youth programming strategy. And also our strategic direction D, care for park assets to meet evolving needs and practices. And that's a project manager position that we have brought forward multiple years to fill that need in our planning area. As we know, the mayor was not aligned with our recommended budget, and the mayor recommended 7.01% increase to the NPRB tax levy. Before I get to the next thing, I want to make sure I also say to President Forni and Vice President Abeni, your incredible work around this piece here, and we know what that was to get to the point to where, so first of all, let me say thank you for that and the effort that you put forward. I want to acknowledge that. But the Board of Estimate and Taxation, the BET, passed the 2025 maximum tax levy increase for the NPRB at an 8.27%, which included two of the four elements requested by the Park Board. And those two were invest in the employees and reduce the barriers to program participation for our youth. Again, my gratitude to President Forni and Vice President Abeni. The 2026 budget plan forecasts the property tax levy increase at a 6.33%, and it includes the system equity investments needed to provide the standard level of services for Greco and Upper Harbor Terminal Parks. I also want to make sure I acknowledge to the board the incredible legacy work that you have done going forward, and I wanted to address this here to speak to really these legacy moments. And those areas were the dedicated Parkway and the stormwater funding. The agreement between the NPRB and the City for investment for critical new fundings with the City of Minneapolis for Parkway repairs starting in 2025, and the establishment of the NPRB stormwater utility charge that began in 2024. And again, we've recognized the work that has taken to get to this point, and again, gratitude to our staff and to our Commissioners to get this point, our many days that we met, as we all know, to be able to get to this point to where these are now embedded in our legacy and our fees for these important amenities in our park system. Very grateful for that. The next one that the board asked, and there was three of them, we had those first two, was the Minneapolis Parks Foundation Endowment. I want to acknowledge at this point Commissioner Schaefer, Commissioner Musich, and President Forni, who met tirelessly for many, many hours and many, many discussions for multiple months on this. And also, I'd like to acknowledge our staff, Michael Schroder, Drew Weisman, Jennifer Ringold, and myself, I'll throw myself in there, for the incredible work to work as a team to get to this point of this endowment work. So the partnership between the NPRB and the Minneapolis Parks Foundation for the foundation to provide funding in perpetuity for historic infrastructure, regional park and trail care and maintenance, and natural resources. By the end of this year, the endowment agreement will be approved by both parties, and the work will begin to establish an endowment, historic. Very excited. So I don't want to diminish the work that this board has done in these three legacy moments in the, really, the brief time here in your tenure as a board. Congratulations on that, and very, very grateful, and wanted to recognize that. Two more minutes. I should stop here. Is that okay? Should I go do one, should I do one more? Or can I go? I can start with, I'll do one more, and then I'll stop. The one, I'll start with the strategic, what's really important too is to recognize the 2023 to 2026 strategic direction that the board has passed that is based on my performance and the organization's performance. And these were adopted by the board in May of 2022. The strategic direction A is act boldly for our climate future.[1794.74] The strategic direction A is act boldly for our climate future. So that includes reduce carbon footprint, implement resiliency projects and service area master plans.
Years is a Phelps Park South Minneapolis neighborhood-based 501(c)(3), raising and providing support to help provide structured activities for youth in the Phelps Park community. We contribute over 10,000 volunteer hours, equipment, uniforms, activity resources per year, serving about 300 underserved Phelps families, many at-risk youth K-318, primarily involving them in Minnesota Twins RBI baseball, park and rec basketball, track, flag, and tackle football. Phelps Park field surfaces dust and dirt and in dire need of resurfacing. The PAC has had a fundraising agreement in place with the NPRB over, for about two years, during which time PAC has raised about $750,000 pledged toward a $1.8 million project to Phelps Park Field resurfacing project from donors that include the NFL, Minnesota Vikings, Minnesota Twins, Minneapolis Foundation, Yellow Tree Corporation, local initiative support corporation, and more. However, the NPRB fundraising agreement with the PAC needs to be renewed so that the NPRB does not forfeit these funds that would benefit in our vital resource to a community that's still trying to heal after the death of George Floyd. We have partnered to serve these youths so that they can have equitable resources and opportunities basic in youth life. Even though the fundraising agreement renewal is not on the agenda tonight, we anticipate it will be upcoming to eliminate barriers needed to finance, to finances to these underserved youth. Thank you.
Thank you. Then, and once again, if you have any statement that you'd like to share, Dawn up here can take any statements you have. It's, you know, Felicia, and then after that is Karik Sarbacher.
Greetings, Commissioner. My name is Felicia Perry. I've been a resident of North Minneapolis for over 40 years. I'm speaking today to address the continued environmental and economic injustice happening in our neighborhood due to the unlawful removal of trees by the Minneapolis Park and Recreation Board in collaboration with the Department of Forestry. Two years ago, two trees were removed from my property without proper procedures under NPRB's ordinance PB 1023 Section C, which requires testing and confirmed diagnosis of diseased trees before any trees can be removed. These removals were done without testing, and no lawful diagnosis was ever made. Despite these violations, I was billed $4,985.33 for the unauthorized removal with the threat of assessment to my home if payment was not made. Thanks to community organizing and support from my north side neighbors, we were able to secure funds from Cargill, which has since covered the amount I was unjustly charged. However, many of my neighbors have not been as fortunate. The park board has continued to exploit our community, removing trees without due process, assessing us for those costs, and in many cases, robbing us of our equity and generational wealth. The park board is benefiting from these actions while residents are left struggling with financial burdens that should never have been placed on us. To make matters worse, almost half of the unlawful condemnations and tree removals in the entire city have occurred right here in North Minneapolis, a community that has already been historically marginalized. This disproportionate impact on our neighborhood has caused widespread financial harm, and it's not just about me. My neighbors deserve retroactive compensation back to 2018 for the unlawful removal of trees from their property. This situation is far from resolved, and we should not have to pay the price for the park board's failure to follow its own ordinances. Furthermore, despite the admission of the former Department of Forestry Director Ralph Severt, who acknowledged in an interview that no trees in North Minneapolis were tested, there has been no accountability. Mr. Severt has since retired, and the intimidation I experienced right here in this building at another meeting, official, he, he and another official approached me before I gave public comment and testimony to try to intimidate me against making those comments. What we need is for y'all to stop these assessments on our property, investigate the full scope of the tree removals across the city, provide retroactive compensation to residents like myself and my neighbors who have been financially harmed, and hold NPRB and its staff accountable for its role in facilitating these unjust actions, including addressing the intimidation tactics used against community members who dare to speak out. We deserve justice. We should not have to fight for two years to be heard, or for you all to treat us fairly and equitably.
Thank you, Felicia.
Thank you.
Karik, Karik, and then Mitchell Hansen.
Good evening, Park Board Commissioners. My name is Karik Sarbacher. I'm a resident of District Five, a member of Local 363, an NPRB forestry arborist, and tonight I'm standing in solidarity with my neighbors, Minneapolis residents. Of the almost three years I have been employed by NPRB, I spent a year of that time working on the north side. During that time, my crew interacted with residents as we performed our day-to-day tasks, and we became increasingly aware of the problems surrounding private ash tree removals disproportionately affecting residents in north because of practices that NPRB continues to engage in, despite outcry from the community, to set up meetings with community leaders and to seek solutions to prevent residents from potentially losing their homes. Instead, the response from the park board management was for the Director of Forestry, Ralph Sever, and Operation Manager Heather White to exclusively show up at our shop on the north side and inform forestry staff that we were not allowed to talk to residents about private ash tree removals. They even went so far as to try to issue a gag order in our work rules, which stated that forestry employees were not allowed to say anything that could be interpreted as critical of the park board. Fortunately, our unions prevented that from happening. Instead of working together to find solutions to reduce the risk of residents losing their homes, the tone deaf response from NPRB was to try to silence the voices of residents fighting to stay in their homes and employees trying to find, to work to find solutions. I will not be silenced. I'm not interested in blame or punishment, rather, I'm focused on working collaboratively to find creative solutions to reduce the burden that these practices and NPRB are having on our community. I urge you to do the same with self-reflection, keeping in mind the values on that wall, the mission to dismantle historic inequities. Please don't allow these issues to continue to be perpetuated. Work with us. Becca Thompson, this is your district, work with us, set up a meeting. Let's find solutions. Thank you.
Mitchell?
Hello, greetings. Thank you for having me, two minutes. You can actually probably hopefully understand me this time. So I'm just gonna run through some numbers quick. So just in case you didn't know, from 2018, 2019, so 2018, 238 removals, or levied assessments, 2019, 148. Between 2020 and 2021, there were 608. Ultimately, between 2013 and 2019, there were less levied assessments than just 2020 to 2022. So tell me how that's not targeted. Tell me that, how that has nothing to do with targeting people in North Minneapolis. This exponential death curve thing, you're gonna, now they're gonna use this money, the $8 million, for elm. I thought elm wasn't a problem. In the words, in the words of Ralph Severt, "Since 1975, Dutch elm disease has been around." We know that. But now you're gonna use money for Emerald Ashore, in belief, for elm again? If Emerald Ashore isn't a problem anymore, then why aren't we talking about elm? I simply don't understand how, also, you say that you don't know how many trees are on private property, yet publicly you do, and know exactly how much to ask for in bonding requests. If you don't know how many trees you're gonna remove, how can you say 1.2, 1.8 million? We need, and that's, that's not Mr. Arvinson's job, that's whoever's telling him to do that. And I don't know who it is, but Mr. Barrick is the only one that could answer that question. He doesn't get back to anyone. Also, it might be time to hire a new forester, that would probably be helpful. It's not fair to put this on staff who aren't even in forestry to do all of the work. You know, when you're younger, you think that, like, big entities like this are just, like, in collusion, and then you realize that, like, they're good individual people. And ultimately, you can whittle it down to just a few people a lot of times that are really doing the terrible things on purpose, and the people that are supporting them. And I know those people because they said they want to put me on a shelf, like Heather White. Put me on a shelf where I'm from, that may mean something different than where you're from, but that's a threat. And unless you're gonna deal with these problems, like what was just said before, you deserve no respect. And I'm not talking about, I'm saying, like, individually, everyone is different. However, some of you don't deserve any respect at all.
Thank you. I will now close our open time and move back then to Superintendent Bangora and our budget.
Okay. Thank you, President Forney, and Commissioners. I think we were gonna move to, right here, Strategic Direction B. Cultivate each community's place in honor of culture traditions in Minneapolis parks, and that is defined by enhanced and unified organization-wide volunteer management, and also enhance community safety and police engagement activities. And within a 2025 to 2026 budget, the department actions, again, as mentioned before, is all built into that, but we want to continue our indigenous acknowledgement and reconciliation work through a contractual service increase. Strategic Direction C, implement quality youth and intergenerational programs. The board's commitment to implement quality youth intergenerational programs and ensure its success through program capacity measurement, multi-tiered program evaluation, and enrollment tracking. In the budget, again, expansion to a citywide needs-based free and reduced cost to youth programming. Youth investment, with the ARPA funds expiring on December 31, 2024, as I mentioned earlier, the full $2.6 million property tax support not being realized until 2027, a two-year funding gap of $520,000 in '25 and $260,000 in '26 are closed, utilizing one-time decreases in general fund transfers for operation facility rehabilitation and parkland purchase Strategic Direction D, care for park assets to meet evolving needs and practices. Again, within that, it's increase the rate of Parkway repaving and reconstruction, increase the percentage of assets that are within their expected lifespan, establish the level of service standards for the top 10 assets within the park system, and increase the advancement of policy items identified in the system-wide master plan implementation tracker. So with that, we're gonna implement Parkway investments. Mayor's recommended budget includes an acceleration of $1.25 million in 2025 and $2.7 million planned for 2026, increase in funding necessary to maintain the Parkway's at the same paving condition index as city streets. And when you hear CPI, that's kind of what it refers to. Implementation of next-generation asset management software with enhanced capabilities, one-time funding allocated to Greco Park for care and maintenance, and the 2026 planned increase in property tax for standard levels of service for Greco and Upper Harbor Terminal Strategic Direction E, steward our natural resources. Within that, we talk about natural management, growing public tree canopy, and improving water quality through the BMP management. Within that, the budget, the natural area management funded through the state operations and maintenance funding, the 2026 planned increase to seasonal natural resources specialists, Stormwater Enterprise Fund in 2026 planned addition of a full-time water quality position, and increase to other operating costs. And of course, the participation in the Urban Tree Carbon Offset Program through the partnership with the Green Minneapolis. With that, President Forney and Commissioners, I'm now gonna turn this over to Director Weisman to walk us through the rest of the slides.
Thank you. Welcome, Director Weisman.
Good evening, President Forney and Commissioners. I'm going to walk us through some of the department highlights. And one thing that I will set up for you prior to speaking through this is that without the support for our system equity investment this year, and without the support for the inflationary factors that we asked for for material and supply and contractual services, and a reduction in the collection of property taxes, it really resulted in some service level reductions within this budget, and it also resulted in use of one-time funding to temporarily fund some of the gaps that we are seeing. So in the superintendent's office, the Board of Commissioners, you will see an increase to legal fees in 2025. In the Deputy Superintendent's Office Visitor Services, you'll see a decrease in the ambassador provisional staffing. That is being shifted to recreation and will be used to establish enhanced outdoor supervision pilot program. Various revenue increases and decreases due to trends, allocation of one-time savings for the closing of North Commons Park, Pool, Water Park. So with the structural issues that we continue to have with the Water Park at North Commons, and in preparation for the major capital construction that will go on at North Commons, the plan is to close North Commons Water Park in 2025 and institute the demolition of the park. So that provides some temporary one-time savings, and we are utilizing that one-time savings to fund the act, a limited activation at Greco Park. And there's also an allocation of one-time funding to replace the inflatable moving screen. In 2026, the budget plan forecasts the increase in property taxes to activate, fully activate Greco and Upper Harbor Terminal Parks. In our Environmental Services Division Asset Management, we did some shifting, we do this kind of every year, looking at the enterprise operations and the general fund operations, and really wanting to match what, what is actually happening in those funds. So we are shifting some staffing materials, supplies, and contractual services to the Enterprise Fund for Sculpture Garden and Pay Parking Lot Maintenance. So the Enterprise Fund has not paid for the parking, Pay Parking Lot Maintenance, and so this shift moves that over to the Enterprise Fund. We have a reduction of five ice rink sites due to the uncertain climate fluctuation and warming room rental costs, and there will need to be further analysis, especially for rinks on lakes, as we all understand it's getting harder and harder to maintain ice in the wintertime. So the sites are Powderhorn, the Weber Natural Filtration Pool, Lindale Farmstead, Wyndham, and Matthews. And, and then we did increase material and supplies due to inflation over and above the 2.5%. So, so that's in there. And then again, the allocation of one-time savings from the closing of North Commons Water Park, and a one-time reduction in the general fund transfer for operation facility rehabilitation to fund the addition of seasonal maintenance hours, overtime for full-time employees, material supplies and contractual services, and to procure the equipment that is needed at Greco Park. In 2026, the plan includes, again, the increase to property taxes to provide the standard level of service for Greco and Upper Harbor Terminal Parks. In forestry, there is an increase to contractual services for the grinding and disposal of tree debris, and then there's a transfer from revenue generated from tree preservation projects in which sponsors of the project reimburse the NPRB for the value of public trees affected by the projects, along with the corresponding increase to tree purchases. There is also a transfer now of available proceeds from their Urban Tree Carbon Offset Program Reserve Fund, along with a corresponding increase to tree purchases. In strategic planning, there's an entry, increase in contractual services to continue the Indigenous Parks liaison and NPRB Native American Park Council work around Indigenous acknowledgement development and the training and, and the Indigenous reconciliation plan development. In the Recreation Division, athletic programs and aquatics, again, closing of North Commons Park and provides the explanation of why it will be again, closing of North Commons Park and provides the explanation of why it will be closed in twenty twenty five. And then there are revenue changes based on comparative market rates and trends for sailing program, non-resident water park season passes, pool rental fees, adult volleyball leagues, and field rentals. In youth and recreation center and programs, there is an increase in rec plus fees based on comparative market rates and an increase in rec plus material supplies and training. There's an increase in winter outdoor programming in partnership with environmental education at Weber Natural Fil, at the Weber NSP site to replace the closing of the ice rink. So not being able to create ice there, we are going to be still utilizing that great facility and be offering outdoor winter activities at that location. We're going to increase, an increase to recreation centers' material and supplies to address inflation, a decrease in contractual services, and then closing of recreation centers on the four remaining federal holidays. So this will mean recreation centers are closed on all federal holidays. And then there is an establishment of an enhanced outdoor supervision pilot program at parks that experience high outdoor usage during the major holidays. Also, in recreation, there is a reduction in the recreation center public hours by one hour per weekday during the school year and summer. And then the closing of the sites that were open on Sundays, which will result in no public hours at recreation centers on Sundays. And all of those reductions are based on usage. The, there's less usage at those times. Fee increases based on comparative market rates for room rental fees and summer camp fees, and the establishment of youth sports camps and clinics, and an introduction of a commercial permit use fee as we are seeing more commercial rental of our rec centers. So other initiatives, we talked, I talked about property taxes with all of you, especially during the end of twenty twenty three and then into twenty twenty four. So in this recommended budget, we are reducing our property tax collection rate from ninety nine percent to ninety eight point five percent. And then the property tax increment is decreased based on downward trends in these funding sources. The citywide needs-based free and reduced cost programming strategy, this is outside of the youth and recreation center programming where you would think this would live. And that's because this applies to all youth programming, no matter where it lies within the, our organization. So that's why I've included it here. So it will, this was supported by a property tax increase to help offset potential loss in revenue. And this will be implemented in the summer of twenty twenty five, and it will replace the current programs of fee assistance, scholarship, and free youth programs and rec plus sites. In internal services, so if you think about internal service funds, that is our equipment operations, our information technology services and self-insurance fund. And those funds exist to serve the other departments and funds. So because we weren't able to get the inflationary increase that we needed in contractual services, we needed to hold these budgets to a two and a half percent increase. By doing so, this could necessitate the use of fund reserve balances, which would, that, which would result in a negative impact on the health of the internal service funds. It's okay to do it for one year. It's not sustainable, and we will, we will need to increase in twenty twenty six based on a more consistent, more consistent with inflation and more consistent with the actual costs that we are spending on commercial property insurance. And if it's not supported by a tax increase, budget reductions would be required to maintain the health of the funds. Investment and operations facilities. So we have a five hundred and twenty thousand dollar gap in youth investment in twenty twenty five and a two hundred and sixty thousand dollar gap in twenty twenty six. So in this recommended budget, there in twenty twenty five, there's a one-time decrease of the full transfer amount. And that is used to help fund the youth investment gap and then to fund the Greco equipment needs. The twenty twenty six budget plan includes a one-time decrease of the two hundred and sixty, which leaves just over a hundred thousand that will be able to be transferred to this fund. And it will be used to fill the investment gap in twenty six. These decreases will result in reduced level of funding being available for operations facility rehabilitation projects and would potentially slow upgrades to facilities that have demonstrated operational inefficiencies and lack suitable accommodations for employees. So again, it's okay to do this. It's never okay to do this, but we're able to do this in a short term as long as we're able to build it back up over time. The parkland acquisition fund, the full amount is decreased in twenty twenty five, and this is used to fund the youth investment gap. And of course, this decrease, it reduces funding that's available to support River First acquisition. And this is a one-year pause of this transfer. So in twenty twenty six, it's planned to be fully, back fully. So moving on to our special revenue fund, our natural area maintenance fund, that's an allocation through state operations and maintenance lottery in lieu of proceeds. We instituted a five hundred dollar, five hundred thousand dollar budget in twenty twenty four. In twenty twenty five, that budget will remain at five hundred thousand dollars. And in twenty twenty six, there is a plan to increase seasonal natural resource specialists, increase them from six to nine months of the year to cover crucial seasonal work that takes place from spring to fall. Again, we have the youth employment state direct grant. That will be utilized more fully in twenty twenty five and twenty twenty six as it needs to be fully spent by June thirtieth of twenty twenty seven. Our forestry urban tree campy offset program, it has been slowly building up some funds. So in twenty twenty five, it includes just over a ninety six thousand dollar transfer of proceeds from the fund to the general fund forestry department for the purchase of trees. In our enterprise fund, take a moment. In the enterprise fund for the Sculpture Garden in twenty twenty five, you just approved the concession agreement this evening. So we are planning for revenue to be received from that concession agreement in twenty twenty five, and we're phasing it in. So you'll see an, a jump in twenty twenty five and then a little bit smaller jump in twenty twenty six as that operation gets implemented and becomes successful at the Sculpture Garden. And then again, we shifted staffing from the general fund, from the general fund to better align with the activities between the funds. So looking at how staff is coding to the Sculpture Garden, we've made adjustments to the Sculpture Garden budget to accommodate those changes. For parking operations, there's a shift of the Mill Ruins Park paid parking lot revenue from the parking operations area into the Waterworks Micro Enterprise to better align revenues among the activities. And then again, there is the, the shift of staffing, materials, supplies, contractual services from general fund maintenance of pay parking lots to better align the revenues among the activities. And I forgot to put something on here that might make a couple of you a little happy. It also includes an increase to the Parade School Permit, this school year permit, as well as a slight increase to the daily parking rate at Parade. And then for visitor services, Waterworks, that has the shift of the Mill Rooms paid parking revenue. In golf, the twenty twenty five budget includes the increase in golf fees, charging high schools for golf course use through a per-player junior season pass. This is something that was being applied inconsistently, and this would make us consistent and also be consistent with other golf courses. There is a conversion of four seasonal parkkeepers to two full-time parkkeepers. And these parkkeepers in the summertime will be, and I forget now, will be placed at our two golf courses. And then in the wintertime, one will be placed at Columbia for the simulators to help do the maintenance around the simulator operations. As, and then one will be placed at the Ice Garden to provide extra maintenance in ice. And then twenty twenty six budget plan includes an increase to golf fees based on comparative market rates. And I will also say that we need to look at golf rates based on the increase, increased cost to our golf maintenance staff. And so our increase in golf fees has not covered those increases in the golf staff. In the ice arena, we have an increase to ice rental fees in both twenty twenty five and twenty twenty six. In the enterprise fund, we have the twenty twenty five to twenty thirty capital improvement plan. For twenty twenty five, it includes Parade Ice Garden North Ring hockey board replacement, Nakomas concession building enclosure construction. That construction started this year, and we needed to allocate a bit more money in order to complete it by the operations start next year. And then allocations to several rehabilitation categories. In twenty twenty six, the budget plan includes Columbia Golf Course building envelope renovations. This is a larger, more costly project. So we've allocated two hundred thousand. In a prior year, we're allocating another five hundred thousand in twenty five and another five hundred thousand, I believe, in twenty seven. And then in twenty seven, we'll be able to do the full project at approximately one point two million dollars. The Hiawatha Golf Course cart barn, and then again, allocations to several rehabilitation categories. For our stormwater enterprise fund, our recommended twenty twenty five budget includes an inflationary increase on the base funding for the water quality and storm monitoring of Minneapolis water bodies and water quality education to community members. So this is the base funding and the base work that we have always done. Full disclosure, the city has not accounted for an inflationary increase to this, and we are working with them to potentially and hopefully get a budget amendment across to get the inflationary amount. And then in twenty twenty six, we have an inflationary increase on the base amount, and then the addition of one full-time water quality position and increased supplies and contractual services to provide more technical engineering and contracting repair work. And then again, it, this currently, this fund currently does not have a capital improvement program, and that will be developed over time once we have everything mapped and conditions known and working with the city to increase the dedicated stormwater utility funding that would support the implementation of a capital plan. And again, I'll skip over internal services funds. Oh, I will say one thing, most of this I've already said. But in information technology services, we did include the third installment of fifty thousand dollars for the five-year plan for ongoing security camera and replacement. That is something that we asked for property taxes for. It was not funded, but we felt it was of importance. And so we, we shifted some money around in the budget in order to make that happen. And we also funded the transportation data analytics services the same way. And then we are holding a vacant IT tech position vacant for twenty twenty five to utilize those savings to convert, to convert twenty-four sites from copper internet circuits to fiber optic to improve the internet in recreation centers. A self-insurance fund, we talked about. And then our capital improvement program, again, the park agency. We use the criteria base, and our budget reflects both ordinances. And I believe this is the first CIP that know, this is the first CIP that is fully on the criteria base. So we have no more prior to NPP twenty projects. Everything now on the CIP is the criteria based. So in twenty twenty five, the budget plan includes twelve point three million of NPP twenty funds for neighborhood parks, two point two million of capital levy. In twenty twenty five, the MPRB and city will negotiate and set the guaranteed minimum amount for twenty seven to twenty thirty-one as required by the concurrent NPP twenty ordinances. So we will have that on our list to work on next year. In twenty twenty six, the plan includes the thirteen point two million in NPP twenty funds, two point two in the capital levy funding. Ten point three million of this is allocated to the North Commons Project, and five point one is allocated to other neighborhood parks and rehabilitation projects. In regional parks, the plan CIP is changed reflecting the state legislative legislature not passing a bonding bill in the last legislative session, and it allocates approximately three point one million of the Dibble Hornstein Parkland Dedication Funds to neighborhood and regional park projects in twenty five and twenty six. So now we'll get into the budget book itself. The first section of the budget book has the budget message, which the superintendent has presented to you. It includes the budget highlights, which I just presented to you. Our strategic direction and performance goals. This is the final two years of our strategic directions and priority comprehensive plan strategies and performance goals. So, so we're excited to have a budget that still reflects those directions and strategies. that still reflects those directions and strategies. There is a section on the strategic directions and performance goals. And included or embedded in that document are direct budget allocations. And it now includes budget allocations from 2023, 2024, and now the superintendent's recommended budget for '25 and '26. We also show our strategic directions and performance goals as the superintendent referred to. Each department has budget actions, and we identify which comprehensive plan strategy it is associated with, as well as the strategic direction and performance goal. And if it is connected to our racial equity action plan, we also identify that. So each department will have budget actions for 2025 reflected in this recommended budget. Our background information, I love this picture. But our background information contains the service areas and commissioner districts, our organizational chart, and then fund definitions and a glossary of terms. So now for the meat of the presentation. So for property taxes, we, the BET, set the maximum tax levy at 8.27%. That is what this budget is based on. And so you'll see that we are 17.5% of the total city tax. So 8.3 is approximately a 1.45% increase in the total tax. In 2026, you will see that we are planning for a 6.3 increase, and that would represent a 1.1% increase in the overall city tax. I will explain further what is actually planned for in this property taxes. So as we all understand, the impact of property taxes are going to be more heavily felt on residential properties for this next year and for years to come. And so in our, prior to our budget retreats, we were estimated that we would need approximately a 13% increase in property taxes in 2025. Through the work of the board during the budget retreats, we got that down to 10.07%. And that is what you all approved to request from the Board of Estimate and Taxation. Ultimately, 8.2% was approved. The biggest thing is Greco was not approved for property taxes in 2025. So we have utilized one-time money for that. In 2026, we started during the budget retreats or after the budget retreats, we had a 7.43% property tax levy increase projected. That did not include Greco. So what I can tell you is the superintendent's recommended budget is very conservative for what is planned for in 2026. So it does include Greco Park, it does include Upper Harbor Terminal, it does include the current service level needs for wages and investing in our employees. But it doesn't include any of those extras. It doesn't include any of the prioritization of the implementation of our strategic directions and performance goals. That will be the work that we need to do in the supplementary budget time. But we definitely wanted to project out that we would be expecting a 6.3% property tax levy increase in 2026. Local government aid is held steady as we won't know what the increase is for those years until the next legislative session or the next budget cycle. In our general fund, we have, so with the increase of property taxes of 8.3%, our overall general fund operations is only going up 5.4%. We now, I always talk about how heavily reliant we are on property taxes. That reliance has actually grown. So we're at 81.1% of our general fund is funded through property taxes. And then again, you'll see that in 2026, the only thing that we are showing here is the increase of 6.3% in property taxes. And that equates to a 5.1% increase to our general fund operations. On the expenditure side, again, in 2025, you'll see that the wages in Fringe is the largest percentage increase, and that is connected to the investment in employees. And then the increase to operating costs in 2026 is higher, and that's because of the operating cost needs of Greco and Upper Harbor Terminal Park. And then you'll see the reduction in capital for those one-time reductions in '25 and '26. For each division, you can see, I think the anomaly here is the superintendent's office looks like a very large increase. That is largely due to that legal fee increase of $100,000. And then again, the 4.5% projected for wage growth in 2025. The other largest one is, the next largest one then is environmental stewardship. And that's the next largest one in 20, or that is the largest one in '26, the second largest one in '25. And again, that is due to the wage settlements with 363, as well as the hope of activating Greco and Upper Harbor Terminal Parks, or Karen for Greco and Upper Harbor Terminal Parks. You'll see that the 2025 city management fee contributions and other is a large growth in '25 and a little bit larger in '26. And that is because we have so many unions that have just started their negotiations, and we do not have settled contracts for those unions. So we have a provision for wage adjustments that sits in this fund until those contracts are settled, and then that money is spread out amongst the departments. You'll see that environmental stewardship is still almost 50% of our budget with recreation coming in at 25%. So I'll spend just a little bit of time on our six-year projection. I decided to show a six-year projection this year because we are doing two-year budget cycles. So '25 and '26 is a budget cycle, '27 and '28 will be a budget cycle, and '29 and '30 will be a budget cycle. Again, the larger, the largest increase for 2026 is due to Greco and Upper Harbor Terminal. If we took those out, we would still need about a 5.3% property tax increase, and that would be to maintain our current service levels. In 2027, we have system, or '26, '27, we also have system equity investment coming online, and then a little bit in '28 and '29. So if I flip over here, you can see how in 2026, now we are showing Upper Harbor Terminal and Greco Park. And then in 2027, the largest increase is for North Commons Park, and then potentially Phelps in 2029. Maybe not, but we want to plan for it just in case. And then right now, 2030 is showing at a 4% increase. And right now, we have no planned system equity investment in 2020, 2030. In our, oh, I love, this is my favorite picture of the whole PowerPoint. So in our special revenue fund, you'll see ARPA is reduced. That was for the Tree Program. State funds are going up a little bit in 2026. That's to fund the seasonal position request in the natural area, maintenance area. And then you can see the natural area maintenance area here reflected where it shows the $582,000 in 2026. So this is coming from the operations and maintenance lottery proceeds. So if the lottery proceeds don't increase before 2026, we will need to slightly reduce the rehab category in the CIP. So you'll see that in one of the lines of your CIP, where we're shifting funds from the rehab category to this operations category. And we will again be watching the O and M lottery proceeds as it sometimes will increase based on lottery use it, lottery play. So we will be watching that as we move into 2026. And our Enterprise Fund for 2025, you'll see parking is the largest income. Vendors and concessions is the second, and then golf is the third. And you do see there is a reduction in our improvement line this year. As I said, our fees in the Enterprise Fund are not, at this point, have not caught up to the projected wage increases that we will be experiencing. And so it will be really important to review markets and hopefully adjust for those revenues in 2026. So in 2026, you'll see a little bit of an increase to improvements as we hopefully increase revenue slightly. And then our Enterprise Fund capital program, this has quite a bit of red on it. So there is a lot of revised. And that is really because of the chalet building envelope need, as well as Worth Golf Course and the parking lot redesign and replacement, where we had to kind of shift funding around. And then in 2025, we needed to add the Nakomas concession building increase. So that's why that's in red, and we took some money out of the rehabilitation categories in order to fund that. In the Stormwater, again, you'll see that there is a slight increase in 2025 and a bigger increase in 2026 as we do inflationary increases on the base amount. And then in '26, have the request to increase and expand the operations. Our internal services funds, you'll see for 2025, we have adding to our balances projected, and then 2026, having that kind of even out. Our personnel summary, in 2025, we have the addition of two full-time parkkeepers in our golf operations. That was something that was discussed and talked about during the union negotiations. So that is why that is there. And then in 2026, there's seven full-time positions being requested. Six of those are the system equity investment for Greco and Upper Harbor Terminal Parks, and one is the Stormwater position. And now I will turn it over to Adam.
Welcome, Director Harbison.
Thank you, Director Wiseman. Good evening, Commissioners. I'm going to go over the capital improvement program for 2025 through 2030. And really quickly, I always, I always tell Paul and his colleagues to not pass out the candy until I'm done speaking, but that's okay, as long as you also pay a little bit of attention to me. Tonight, I'm going to go do a quick overview about the CIP and talk about funding amounts. That'll be a little bit of a repeat of what Director Wiseman presented, so I'll be quick. A couple of key format changes in the documents that are being handed out to you today. And then I want to talk about a couple of key changes in the 2025 CIP, 2025, 2030 CIP, and what that really means. And then, as always, I'll give a park dedication update. So as always, the capital program uses updated 2024 neighborhood and regional equity rankings, which are part of the packet that you've just been handed. Remember, this is the second year that we actually have three lists. We have the developed neighborhood parks, the undeveloped neighborhood parks, and the regional parks. The capital program does continue, as before. The recommended process we have used since the beginning of NPP 20, which is that we honor allocations in last year's CIP regardless of those updated rankings. So if a park's ranking does drop, we don't take it out of the CIP. Once that promise is made to the community, we try to keep that project in the CIP. However, when delays are necessary, we utilize those brand-new 2024 rankings to determine which projects will be delayed. The capital program also this year reflects in detail the results of Resolution 2024-144, which is the North Commons move. So as we knew, we were going to, by this board's authorization, delay every project in '26 through '29 one year. So what you're seeing in front of you is how that actually works and still prepares a balanced CIP. So just for reference, right now, there are 74 of 153 neighborhood parks that are in the CIP. Those do skew more toward the developed parks. So 62% of the developed parks are getting an allocation before 2030, and then 22% of the undeveloped parks. All of the regional parks have appeared multiple times in the CIP since the equity metrics began. Because there's fewer of those, we're typically seeing an investment cycle of about every four to five years. Each regional park will pop into the CIP. So the numbers here, Director Wiseman gave a bit of an overview for, but I'll just point to that NPP 20 line on the top, where we have 12.69 in '25 and 13.12 in '26. And that's where we kind of top out prior to needing to renegotiate with the city for an escalation factor in those outmost years. The neighborhood park capital levy stays the same. And as Director Wiseman noted, and I will go into a little bit more detail, we actually have a very significant amount of park dedication allocated this year, $3.11 million, which I think is probably the highest we've done in a single year since the inception of that program. On the regional side, I'm literally going to highlight that we have to zero out the expected Met Council state bonds for 2025. The 2024 session would have bonded in a way that appears in our 2025 CIP, because that money becomes available in the middle of '24. Unfortunately, that is a zero, so the regional CIP has been completely re-reconstructed. The 2025 number for Parks and Trails is an actual number. Since that is sales tax revenue, we don't always know the actual number until we're much closer to that time period. So the 2026 and forward are estimates that are fairly conservative in nature based on previous years. So you can see the 2025 number really beat the estimate by quite a lot, you know, about another $750,000. So typically, what happens then is as those numbers come up, that helps offset sometimes when the state doesn't bond. So in this particular CIP in that 2025 year, So in this particular CIP in that 2025 year, we are getting a little more money out of the regional, sorry, the Parks and Trails legacy than we expected, which helps lessen the pain of not having the Met Council bonds. However, the lack of the Met Council bonds is a seven, is a $3.7 million hit, so that is significant. So how to read the equity metrics, just really quickly, you've all been through this before, but I just want to point it out for those listening at home and anyone else in the room behind me. So the equity metrics, which start on roughly page five of the little packet you just got, this is a clip from the developed parks equity metrics. On the left-hand side, we have information on the park. We are showing both the 2023 and 2024 rankings, so you can see what changed. If you have questions about what might have changed or why parks are moving around a little bit, I can certainly take those questions as part of the question and answers in between the board meetings. We do have all this, this data in-house, so I'm able to answer it, but I won't go into detail tonight. The parks that are highlighted in blue are parks that do have an NPP 20 investment in the CIP. So we do try to move all the way through all of the parks before coming back around. So the ones that are in blue are essentially either in the six-year CIP you have in front of you or they have already gotten investment in past years. So if you're curious about what that investment was, your best resource is always the online true CIP. You can look up a park and find out when it was invested in. In the yellow, there would normally be a highlight for those parks that were added, but because of the North Commons funding completion, there are no new parks being added in 2030. There are seven equity scores on the neighborhood developed side, there are five on the undeveloped and eight on the regional. Those scores add up to the total score and then we rank those parks in order. Reading the CIP, again, going back to your first page, we have park ranks, park names and projects on the left-hand side. And I think most important this year is that we have a fairly significant format change. As Director Weisman alluded, we have no projects left that are pre-equity metrics. And so there used to be a column in the CIP that said, "Why is this park in the CIP?" And there was colors, there was blue and green and yellow and all of that. I've eliminated that column because essentially there's only one reason why a park is in a CIP and that's because it has an equity ranking. In order to preserve a couple of key pieces of information that I think are also helpful if you kind of scan through, is that I've preserved a couple of shadings. In that park project column, you'll notice some projects are in green. Those are our neighborhood rehab, or sorry, our play area rehabilitation projects, so you can scan through those. They exist a little bit outside the equity metrics. And then under the funding sources on the right-hand side, I've kept the park dedication items still highlighted in purple. So some of those same colors that you saw before, but just in a little bit of a different place, so you can scan and easily find those. As before, we have a previous CIP and the revised in side-by-side columns with changes shown in red. And then also because we want to be, you know, as transparent about the decision-making that took place, I did go ahead and highlight and shade that 2026 year, which is an unusual year for us in that the only project on the capital side of the CIP is North Commons and all the other projects have been, have been delayed one year. Notes always provide clarity on why a change might be made, although I didn't highlight every time we moved a project in order to accommodate North Commons. So just really quickly, I like to think of NPP 20 as we move through it in a couple of phases. So phase one was a variety of parks that really had the greatest community need and had been the most historically under investment, invested. These parks concentrated in the north, in North Minneapolis and also in the Upper South. They tended to have high scores all the way across the board and typically wound up with rankings between about 1 and 40. Right now, we are actually into what I would think of as phase two of NPP 20. And these are parks that you might think of as being tired or declining. They are scattered all across the city and they tend to have moderate or low community scores, but actually high park asset scores. So these are the parks that we have not invested in over a long period of time regardless of where they are. And you can see that in the 2029 and 2030 CIP here, you've got a couple of examples that are scattered all across the city, Creekview, McCray, Armitage. And then the next ranked parks are also scattered across the city. You have parks in the south side, downtown, southwest, and then just below that, there's a couple in northeast. So these are parks that are showing up in the equity metrics primarily because of their asset condition and a lack of historic investment and not as much their community characteristics. Phase three are those parks that are doing just fine in neighborhoods that are doing just fine. But in eight to 10 years, when we get to them, they are going to need that investment. So it is important that we kind of keep on, keep on making that along, moving that along. So major changes in the CIP, obviously the North Commons move was the most major change in this CIP, which follows Resolution 2024-144. But when you get into the math, there's a couple of things that get revealed when you start doing the actual spreadsheet. So one of the things that we've chosen to do is those projects that all got delayed one year, we did not escalate their funding, right? So we didn't increase those dollar amounts year over year. And the reason is this, right now, as I presented earlier, NPP 20's baseline numbers are not escalated. So in theory, we're locked in at this amount that is not taking inflation into account, but we hope that it will. When we renegotiate with the city, we expect that each of those years will increase by a certain percentage. When that happens and we have those numbers, we will go back in a future CIP year and escalate all those projects. If I provided escalations right now, we would end up delaying some projects even longer because we would have less money in each year to work with as we expanded each of those projects. So we did just a one-for-one. If there was $1 million in 2027, we put $1 million in 2028 instead of escalating that. I think it will need to be escalated, but we will do that after renegotiation with the city. Secondly, the amount of capital versus rehab varies from year to year across our CIP. And it turns out that in 2026, we actually had lower capital dollar amounts and higher rehab. And in '27, we had higher capital. That means when you move all the '26 projects into '27, you end up with extra capital money. So we had a question of what we ought to do about that. So in conversation with the executive team, what we've decided to do and what we're presenting in this CIP is that we actually are preserving one playground project per year beginning in '27. So instead of delaying all the 2027 projects, we're keeping one of those playground projects in '27 and delaying the other two and keeping one in '28 and delaying the other two, right? So we're able to keep those playground projects moving a little bit more quickly. Those playgrounds were selected based on the ones that have the worst performance on their longevity and condition. So it's based solely on asset condition. And I can get into exactly which ones those are, but they are noted in the notes section of your CIP. In addition, we took, there was a little bit of money still left over, and so we actually put that into the new athletic fields and diamonds rehabilitation. Our data is showing that that asset class is lagging behind all of the others in terms of its within useful lifespan. And so we wanted to accelerate that work. So some additional money drops into the rehab fund for athletic fields and diamonds. So that's how that's been solved at this point, obviously open for discussion. Other changes in the CIP, I mentioned the Minnesota, state of Minnesota failed to bond for regional parks. We needed to modify the entire regional CIP again, so you'll see a lot of red ink there. Just want to be clear that we use the equity metrics, not the funding source, to determine which projects get delayed. So if a project had bonding, it doesn't mean that that project was automatically delayed. Essentially, I decide, I determined from the equity metrics which projects needed to be delayed and then I had to reorganize the funding to make sure that the ones that were to stay in '25 would be funded with Parks and Trails. So that's why you see a lot of change happening. It's to both reflect a lower dollar amount, but also to make sure that we're delaying projects that have a lower equity ranking. I just want to say that the volatility of state bonding has become a significant issue in project delivery overall and in development of the CIP. And it's something that I hope that we might have a point of discussion about during the next year because it feels like every year I'm reconstructing the regional CIP and we need to probably find a different way of doing that. The CIP also reflects another recent resolution that did a regional swap for timing reasons between Victory Worth and Upper Harbor Terminal. And so you'll notice that that Victory Worth money is back in the CIP in the right spot. Director Weisman mentioned the general fund transfer for service centers. There's a realignment of some rehab funds at the request of asset management in order to address copper wire issues. So there's been more money transferred into the park lighting rehab fund from some other places in order that our staff can do more work to get lighting rewired. And then there's, as again Director Weisman mentioned, a shift of some regional pavement rehab out of the CIP into natural resources management. And one thing that I forgot to put up on the screen here, so I'm going to say verbally, there are two locations on the regional side where we've actually made more specific project descriptions in order to ask you to essentially approve more detailed direction for what we should be working on. And one of those is the allocation instead of generally to NACOMAS Hiawatha Regional Park. It's an allocation to the Lake Hiawatha area revision. So that will allow the Hiawatha Golf Course and Lake work to proceed. And so that is in your CIP as a specific project description. And then the other one is the use of some of the Central Mississippi Riverfront Regional Park general plan implementation money to rehabilitate the roof on the Nicollet Island Pavilion, which is becoming a critical need at this point. So there's been money in '25 specifically allocated to that project. Again, those project descriptions, we often try to keep them as plan implementation and then we work with staff and with the public to determine exactly how those will be spent. But in some cases like this in the CIP, we do come to you and ask, we recommend some specific guidance and should you approve that, then that would, that would essentially tie our hands to work on a particular project with a particular piece of money. So I just wanted to highlight that tonight because those are in your CIP now and I didn't want it to look untransparent. So really quickly on park dedication, this year we're making $3.1 million of allocations in 22 different parks. All of this funding is augmenting existing projects. There are no new projects and we sort of have to do this because we are, we have a lot of projects. So that reduces staff burden. A significant part of this is actually going to help acquire some of the missing link properties that you approved agreements around tonight. To date, 77% of all neighborhood areas have received allocations for their parkland and that's pretty huge. All but four neighborhood areas in the city have actually had money come in and then 66 neighborhoods have had allocations made. And then since 2014, $39 million has come in through park dedication and you, the board, have allocated or spent 26.8 million of that. That's 69% of the total amount paid. Last year, that number was at 57%, so we've made a significant increase this year in the, in the amount of park dedication money that's rolling out to the benefit of communities. And with that, I'm going to turn it back over to Director Weisman.
Okay, so before you leave here this evening, you will be receiving the superintendent's recommended budget. And I really like the cover this year, so, so enjoy it. And then the large capital improvement program, which I already have, and then of course the 2025 and 2026 budget adjustments. It includes the benchmarking information as well as the racial equity assessment for each of those. And then we have hot off the presses, the park funding fact sheets, so you'll be receiving those as well. So our next steps is on November 6th, the Administration and Finance Committee will receive public comment on the superintendent's recommended 25 to 26 budget, time certain of 6:15 PM. And Commissioners will review and comment on the superintendent's budget. On November 20th, the full board will receive public comment at open, during open time and the full board will entertain a review and comment on the budget. On December 4th, the full board will receive public comment during open time and then the Admin and Finance Committee will approve the 2025 tax levy and annual budget. So again, what I will recommend to the Commissioners is that amendments that you may have or want to pose to the superintendent's recommended budget should be all-in and decided on at the December 4th meeting so that when we go to city, to the City Public Service Center and City Hall on December 10th, those are not televised. So for transparency, we would like the amendments, if at all possible, to be approved at the December 4th meeting. The other recommendation I will say is that as you start reviewing this, if you do have an amendment that you are going to want to bring forward, please start that process as soon as possible. Please reach out to the impacted division head so that staff can be involved in helping you cost out that amendment, help you with any other needs that you might need related to those amendments. And then on December 10th, the city council now meets at the Public Service Center, so the public hearing will be held at the Public Service Center. We don't have a confirmed room yet, but there isn't room for us at the Public Service Center. There's not as many meeting rooms. And so it looks like we will be needing to walk across the street to City Hall in order to do our budget adoption, but more to come on that. So questions. To assist, to assist staff in preparing for the budget sessions, questions and comments should be emailed to the superintendent in van, in advance of the meetings. So our next meeting is November 6th. We would like your questions submitted to the superintendent by October 30th to allow time for staff to respond and get your questions answered, posted publicly as well as distributed to you before the budget, before the board meeting so that you can ask follow-up questions and see that information prior to the board meeting. The November 20th board meeting, questions are due by November 13th. And then for the December 4th board meeting, questions are due by November 24th. The first two dates are a Wednesday, this last date is a Monday and that's due to the holiday. So we'd like to receive them a couple days earlier in order to address them before the So I will end.
All right, President Forney and.
Yay.
Thank you, President Forney and Commissioners. I just wanted to end real quickly with one thing I want to make sure, I've been warned this when you recognize people and sometimes you leave someone out, so I did. And Peggy Larson, our senior financial analyst who sits right over here, is an amazing addition to our team, of course. She's part of this wonderful group from finance and I wanted to make sure I acknowledged her here today. And so my apologies for missing you earlier, but with gratitude, I think you're amazing. So thank you. And then I wanted just to mention a couple of things real quick before we close. I want to assure this board the amount of work that went into this, this, this work. This, this team that sits here and the ones that you don't see here, they got a very clear direction for me. There was no, there was nothing that we had extra. As you know, when we, this board made a decision to do 10.07, we were in higher than that initially and then we were at a 7.01 and we fought to get it 8.3. And then we were at a 7.01 and we fought to get it 8.3%. So I want to express the challenge we had just from the start to make budget was very difficult. It was a very big challenge for this, for this staff and the budget impact that was affecting this organization to do our current services, provide the services for our constituents. This team, I want to express the sausage making that goes behind is tremendous, right? And I got that term from somebody, I won't name it, but I love that term. But the amount of work that went into this, this team went back and I can't express the amount of meetings and debates and conversations. They went to all of their teams, the division heads, they went from assistant division heads to staff to managers. So it was not done in a vacuum. I don't stand here today saying I'm making decisions basically in a vacuum. This is truly collaborative effort across our organization and they're very, very thoughtful about what they bring forward. And we know in front of this board, the decision you have to make and always is difficult, but we wanted to make sure that, I wanted to express the real effort and the real thoughtfulness and engagement that was very important for me as I make decisions to bring forward to this board. I also want to make sure I recognize that I hear this board and we know the board's what you expect and what you want to see delivered to this organization. So we all talk about every commissioner and the board about what the needs are and the importance that you all have. And that's clearly defined in not only a strategic direction performance measures, but also what the board has been telling us over the last year. So I want to express to this group and to the board, the due diligence and the sheer amount of conversation we've had, the debates. It's been, it's been tough, but I do want to say that the impact was a challenge. We have more challenges coming in the next year and '26, as you know, it's significant. So we have a lot of work to do next, next year. But I'm proud of this group and the hard work that they did to get to this point, to bring forward some really difficult choices, but they did a great job and I'm proud of them. The last thing I want to say is this amazing picture that's up here and thank you to President Forni that said earlier today, the significance of this gold medal because it really does signify an amazing organization. We had five finalists that we received probably from, I hope I get this right, 1988, we won in 1989. We then had 16, 17, and 18 as finalists. We didn't win. 2021, we were a finalist and we won in 2024. 35 years to get this prestigious award for this organization. It is about the people in this room. So a few things that is important that the, I have the honor of being on the American Academy for Park and Recreation Administration. I've been a fellow for that, which is pretty amazing. And the American Academy chooses five people that look at, and they have talent across different areas. And what they look at is seven areas. And I think Julie said earlier that this is 2,500 plus words. That's an 11 paragraph thing. Ben Johnson, Angela Donahue, Murphy, these guys doing incredible work through communications, Dawn, her team, amazing way they, they sent this. And the areas that they look at is long range planning, resource management, volunteerism, environmental stewardship, program development, professional development, and agency recognition. It is a really comprehensive way that they look at organizations where there's seven categories, there's seven that apply for this. Five of them are what they call class, classes. There are seven classes. We're the 400,000 above class called Class One, which is really exciting. So I just wanted to say that I don't take this lightly, the significance of this. It is such a big deal. And it's really about the people in the room, it's about the organization and it's about you as a board and, and what you allow us to do and, and provide services. And we're grateful for all of you and for your support to be able to get something this significant. And sometimes it's generational. I think Brian was talking about this and he actually, in 1989, was actually there 35 years ago. So Brian kind of always gives me the history, the history behind it. But it's such an amazing award for the folks in this room because it is really about organization, how we operate. It's about the people, it's about the staff here and it's about our constituents who support this organization. So incredibly grateful. I don't want to ever diminish, you know, to say how important this is. And I will say that we would have the gold medal plaques here. Unfortunately, the one job we could have packed it in some bags, like Meg did in 2021, the finalist plaque, we mailed them out because there was two of them. There was a finalist plaque and then there was the gold medal one and they're heavy. So Ben went to the Federal Express out of the expansion center and said, how, what can go wrong? Well, the vehicle that the two, these plaques were traveling in crashed, apparently caught on fire and our plaques were lost. So they're gone. The odds of that is just unbelievable and it's going to be in folklore for years to come. I look at it as kind of a fun thing to say in our time that our medals were, and it'll probably get exaggerated, like a tornado took it away or something like that, right? It'll get better every year, but what an amazing thing to, to hear something like that happen. But the reality is we're going to go back and hopefully get these re-bonded or reprinted and get them back to us at some point. We do have one that Fast Science presented, it's very light and you can kind of carry that around. We had a great employee appreciation yesterday and staff were excited. They didn't even know about it, a lot of them didn't know. And they went outside with the very light one and they took a photo of it and very proud of it. So I wanted to show that we will get that at some point. It will be hanging up here in our boardroom. We will have, we are working on a really way that we can kind of get this out to the community right now. Ben Johnson's working on it and Annie Olson. They produced and presented a very great comprehensive way that we can really show the community how amazing this is, right? We have to show that and to recognize this organization. So I just wanted to share that. Thank you for allowing me to have the time to speak. I know I'm a very emotional person. If you guys haven't known that by now, they all know that I cry a lot and they, you know, so, but, but I really appreciate that and thank you for your time. And again, look forward to your responses and, and your amendments or questions to the budget presentation. Again, thank you to the staff and thank you to you all. With that, we're done. So thank you very much.
Bravo, bravo. You guys were tasked with something pretty huge and I'm just really impressed. I go through with a fine tooth comb. But Commissioners, anybody have any questions at this point in time of staff regarding this? Oh, everybody's kind of reaching. Okay, Vice President Benny.
Thank you, President Forni. I think I want a specific question probably for Director Weisman. So the operations facilities, you know, the reduction in revenues to fund 2025, in 2026, are you going to start to bring that back up, do you think? Is that what's in there or?
So it's fully reduced to zero in 2025 to help fill the $520,000 youth investment gap. In 2026, it comes back a little bit, but it is earmarked to help with the $260,000 youth investment gap. And then by '27, it will be back up to its original amount.
Thank you. I'm just happy to see trying to get right back in there in '26. I also did note that in 2026, you took a conservative approach to the system equity investment and I think that's really wise. And so the, the, so the 6.3%, is that what it is in '26? You know, that, that's not got, that's covering what the organization can see now going forward for that year. So that, that seems, that's nice. I thought that number seemed less terrifying than I thought it was going to be. So I just also wanted to comment about the stormwater inflationary. I know you used to be working on that and others are working on that with the city, but just for, we've made the comment up here before, for this budget year, it was shown as increasing annually after 2024, which is the first year that it was taken in for the park board. And then I guess just maybe a quick thing for Director Arvindson. So I appreciate the CIP, the NPP 20 escalation that you're going to try to do when you renegotiate with, inflationary escalation, when you try to renegotiate or when you renegotiate with the city. Depending on the lay of the land at that time, is there also room to look at the, the total period of time? Because I think that, you know, I think that right now, I think you don't know, but the whole end of the program, you might have a little, a little cushion there because I do think that bringing the buying power up of the projects, if, so if you don't get as much inflationary, can you kind of play with that to actually bring those up? You get one more swing set with a little more money that you, you know, if you had $20, $18, you know what I'm trying to say, so. I mean, if you don't get, if you're not successful in getting the right inflationary number, can you maybe kind of revise that, you know, the six-year outlook and maybe move some things out a little further so that you can get, get more bang for your buck?
Yes, President Forni, Commissioner Benny, I think, at risk of saying this is a good thing, I think, I think we kicked the can down the road on this one. As, as I started to play with putting inflation in now, when our bottom line is flat, it created some real problems year over year. And so in, in some future CIP, you will see how NPP 20 inflation, which we hope that we will get and negotiate successfully for, will apply to the projects that are in the CIP now. And I think at that time, we'll have to consider whether it was enough and whether these projects realistically need to have higher dollar amounts and what the impact is on getting through every park before 2036. So I think, I think that's a question probably for another, another year or another two.
Yeah, I think it's just something I'm a little bit worried about, but at least you're thinking about it, of course you are. I wouldn't doubt that you would, but I am a little worried about that as, as that future gets, we head toward that future. So thank you. That's it.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Yes, I'll start, just two questions. First of all, when we developed our strategic directions and performance goals way back when we first were elected, some of them were in different categories of needs funding, doesn't need funding, et cetera. You mentioned this evening that in '26 and '25 and '26, none of the levy requests would go for any of the performance goals or strategic directions. Can you tell me, I mean, I've been trying to rehearse in my mind our previous two budgets. I, I'm really having a struggle trying to figure out what of our performance goals and strategic directions were included in those budget levies. Because we were honoring the budget requests in the first two years of our term, we were really honoring and respecting the work of the previous board around youth investment. And so we deferred a lot of our thinking, a lot of the, you know, some of those performance goals and strategic directions that had dollar amounts to them. So maybe I'm forgetting something?
President Forni and Commissioner Schaefer, the first thing that I will say is that in the budget book, in the strategic direction area, it does outline the investments that have been made in the budget years of '23 and '24 and then the projected investments for '25 and '26. So one thing I forgot to mention that the superintendent nudged me on, in 2026, where I am showing a 6.3% property tax levy increase, the mayor, in his recommended budget, projected a 2.6 property tax levy increase. So we have an uphill battle just to get, again, our current service level needs met. And we, when we did our budget retreats this year, we provided all the things that we would need for the strategic directions, performance measures that needed investment. And we worked with you to go through those to see which ones that you would prioritize, which ones you would delay until 2027. And we got that information from you and that's how we determined what we did in this budget. But again, we didn't get some of those things funded through the property taxes, right? So in 2026, we're probably going to be in that same vein. It will be a supplementary year, so we will bring this board back together to kind of revisit those needs for, for your performance measures. But I would say that you need to start thinking about them in a way of what things would we cut in order to make these investments? Because it's going to be very tough to get additional property taxes to fund these needs.
Thank you, I really appreciate that. And I do think that it's something that we as a board maybe can go through and look at our strategic directions. I really think there's several of these that I really, we all had a lot of great ideas for performance goals. And I think as a board, we should try to get as many of those done as we can. And if there has not been an investment in the levy the last two years and now we're looking at another two years, it's time for us to figure out how we're going to make that change. Because we were elected to represent the wishes of our constituents. And I think what is in our strategic directions and performance goals represents that fairly. There was some GIS work around visitation that I remember Commissioner Olson brought up, you know, some of those other things that we just have not made an effort to fund. And so I, I think that's pretty important for us to reflect on that. And I feel like there's some other loose threads that really have come forward, maybe they're not in the strategic directions, but have bubbled up from our group that maybe should be included, but primarily we have to stick with what we, what we set out from the beginning. I mean, that's our first tier priority, that's what we decided on and that's what we're trying to deliver. My second question is, I, I was trying to find this. I do not think, we have a current freeze on employment for non-essentials or for, except for essentials, but did I see any cuts to staff in this proposed budget for either '26 or '20, '25 or '26? Could you remind me? I don't think I did.
President Forni and Commissioner Schaefer, no, we do not have any recommended cuts to full-time staffing. We do have the cuts to the recreation center hours and that is a reduction in provisional staffing. That is included in this budget.
Well, I, I just, just my initial blush to hearing overall big umbrella is that we are having a, oh, I'm sorry. I'll, I'll come back when everybody else gets a chance. Commissioner Menz.
Thank you. Commissioner Schaefer, I mean, I feel like we should let people just kind of go on with this. It feels really, I, I know that we want to submit questions via email and things like that, but I find that these forums are really valuable. So I don't know how my fellow board members are feeling, but questions of how the budget was created and like what we're seeing upon arrival is, is really impactful. And it's, and it's a place for us to have discussions. So Commissioner Schaefer, if you have more questions, I think we should ask them. I mean, so my question, and I think that you all had an impossible task, like this is an impossible task. So thank you for, for presenting a budget to us that works within our priorities, which follows some, you know, as closely as you can get. Really appreciate that work. It's hard. I can't imagine doing it. It's, it's a really difficult task for this level of organization with nine different people who are elected up here, all having different views of how we should do this and limited knowledge of what we, how we could, could do this. So I appreciate you all presenting this to us. I do have one values question and it does revolve around the recreation centers. So the, I, I would like to know the decision-making because that's going to feel like, it's going to feel bad to tell people that we're going to reduce the hours of the recreation centers and the Sundays. So I'm, I'm really struggling with, with figuring out how we couldn't figure out how to cut any staff, which I value the staff, but we're going to keep recreation centers closed because maybe we haven't found the right way to get more kids in those recreation centers, but that's going to feel really hard for me and I'd like some direction.
Thank you. President Forni, Commissioner Menz, yeah, the, the challenge we went through, as I said before, and I know I mentioned this, that we had really some deep discussion around this. We had, as you said before, it's a, it's a very difficult task to try to find across the organization efficiencies and, and costs that we can bring.
the organization efficiencies and costs that we can bring forward a balanced budget to this, to the board. The discussions around, I know Assistant Superintendent Kelb is not here, I know that Director Hernandez is here, but the discussions we had looking at these cuts and finding out, or these impacts, was, was discussed thoroughly through the recreation departments all the way down to supervisors and the folks that work within the buildings. So it wasn't, it wasn't anything that was done where we just said, well, let's just cut hour here. We had multiple discussions with staff. And in particular, as we looked at hours within operation of buildings and as we're trying to find a balance in the budget, we looked at times that we would see if there was, and looking at even data, what numbers or where do we have the buildings where, if it was like from eight to nine, like one hour. Like there's time within that space that not a lot of youth are in that space and in particular, as we get into hours of operation in the winter where it's a little darker out, I mean, we tried to figure out what was going to work to try to find costs that we could then bring back a balanced budget. So as we looked at recreation in particular, but again, across the organization, we looked at every department and we found efficiencies and cuts within every department. What stands out, as we clearly know, is when we talk about youth, there's always that concern. And we knew that that would be something that would, that would raise a little bit of curiosity to where we were on that. And even when we looked at our hours for holidays, for example, we know that we don't get a lot of visitors necessarily into our buildings during holidays, but we do know is that we have a lot of activity out in parks. That's why the pilot program, as we start to adjust to how we can then look at the outdoor activity engagements so that we would have staff in spaces to, or engaging staff, or engaging the community out in space. And it doesn't necessarily mean that the buildings are open, but we're impacting or going into the, into the parks and doing activities at a pilot to see if we can make sure that we are still connected to our constituents and our young people. So that was very important. And I know that we can get into the details and we can share specifically the conversations we had with staff and the conversations we had with the department and looking at these hours. But, you know, that's, that's the best I can answer at this point, but I can give more details on how we got to the decision. But we looked, we looked at all operations, we looked at all things within our buildings to find the best efficiencies. And, and again, it was tough to try to figure out how do we get to a balanced budget?
Duly noted. So the hours would be like, it would be eight o'clock and, and I do, I hear that conversation that I'm sure that every piece of staff was included.
Yep.
But, but the, but I'm not sure that the community was given an opportunity to have their say in how often our publicly funded buildings are open. And I, I think that not having them open on Sundays, like there's exploration for community commercial rentals, I heard, that's great. How do we, not having access to those buildings on Sundays or in evenings, like in any form, is a challenge. Partnering, maybe? How do we keep those spaces open? It speaks a lot to our values. Those buildings represent the parks and we're not going to be outdoor supervising kids at 8:00 PM. We're going to have them in the building. And I think that we can do more to get people in those buildings to justify. I, I'm very, and I don't know how my fellow board members feel, but I think this is, if we're worried about free programming, I think that this is, this is very important for families and for our communities, everybody who wants to access buildings. So thanks.
Yeah, President, I'm sorry, President Forney and Commissioner Menz, I do understand that. And, and I've worked in, I worked in the centers for most of my career, so I understand the importance of it. That's why, and as you know, if you know anything about me and personally, of course, and how I fought coming in at 19 and the significance of the investments we put towards youth has been significant. And as Commissioner Schaefer said earlier, we have invested and have transformed recreation in a way that really meets the needs of our, our young people and continue to do that. So I do understand that. And I'm well aware of the fact that young people in the hours of after school, where do they go? They come to our buildings. So it's very important and I get that. And so again, we present this to the board. The board obviously will look at this and, and give us feedback. And we are clear that when we spoke to staff and we looked at our data and we looked at our number of visits in those places, we, we looked at all of those things. We looked at hours of operation, number of people there in the buildings at that time, right? Safety concerns, all those things, we looked at that. And so we can give you, of course, and more of the questions that you put forward to us, more answers back to that so we can have that kind of a conversation. I think this is just presenting it today, but I do understand your concern and it's also a concern of ours. And yeah, so I do, I do hear Commissioner Menz.
Commissioner Alper.
Thank you. Yeah, I just would like to say, great work. These are tough times and they're hard decisions that I know you all had to make. So it's, I really appreciate the presentation tonight and the overview and look forward to digging into it more. But I do want to say, I don't know if it's easier to read this year or I've just, it's on year three, it's like, oh, I know what that color means, so. It feels a little, 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 little easier. But I do, I just want to say a couple of points. I think the regional park funding, very hard to plan, just real hard to plan. And so I look forward to strategizing on that account too. I, I would like to ask if we could get a service area map? It would be great to get a pie chart of, I know you mentioned a sort of 50% of funds, operating funds go towards environmental stewardship. It's, I think it was 50, 50 million or something, but could, could we get a pie chart of those? So environmental stewardship, recreation, et cetera, et cetera. That'd be really great. And then I wanted to clarify two items that the, I believe Superintendent Bangor that you stated right at the beginning that the BET said yes to. So it was the wage settlements and the, on the slide, it was called two different things, both related to youth. And I just wanted to clarify what that was. It was at the very beginning.
Yes, the, yes, yep. Sorry. President Forney, Commissioner Alper, it was the citywide needs-based. So system equity, it's, it's, in the, in the agreement, it was, well, it was around our system equity investment. No, I'm sorry. It was our wage. Yes, sorry. Before I miss this.
President Forney and Commissioner Alper, so the two things that were funded through the BET was the investment in employees, so all the wages. And then we asked for $150,000 of additional property taxes for the citywide needs-based program strategy, envisioning that our revenue streams may decrease before they start increasing. And that was supported by the BET and funded.
So that's the, what we're transitioning from, what we're going to be calling our, the evolution of our free programming?
Correct.
Okay. So just maybe it, yeah, it was called two different things on the slide, so that's why I brought it up. So I just, I just have to say, it's, it's a little bit of, I am saddened to hear, I know, I know I've been a proponent of rethinking our ICE strategy, but I am saddened to hear about the, that the ICE rink closures. And I, I totally understand why. It was, it was a horrible winter for ICE last year, but I would like to say, I know you did it by service area, but there are two ranks in District Three that are impacted. So I, I'm hoping to work with staff to see what assessment can be done on that regard. And then, yes, so I would, I would, I look forward to following up and I'll end there.
Commissioner Thompson.
Thank you, President Forney. I, I'm usually loath to say anything right away because this just feels so dense to me to take it all in. I don't want to say something that will come back to haunt me, except for I don't think it'll be too bad to just say thank you for all of the hard work. I'm sure it cannot be easy. I often consider budgets like two people trying to share a blanket and it feels like the blanket just got smaller and it's like, well, my toes were already cold and now I even have less. I, I will make a comment. I do support the ICE rinks. That was sad for me too, just as someone who grew up going to our rinks. They're wonderful and I, I recognize these, these impacts. And I also just wanted to make a comment on the rec centers. I, that was a highlight. That was the first thing I wrote down as I was listening. I was like, ooh, rec centers. And I think it speaks toward, I plainly, I completely understand it and I don't have a problem with it for us. And I do understand what Commissioner Menz is saying because I think, just bluntly, how our, our, our schools and different community organizations have, have relied on us for a really long time. And I, and I, and I think that there might be conversations to be had. Of course, we're meeting next week with different partners, even if it's the county or the city, to, to recognize the impact that we have on this whole city. And a little bit, I'm like, well, you know, if rec centers aren't open on those days and, and people kind of feel the pinch, then maybe they'll understand how important what parks does for the community just as a larger organization. I mean, sometimes it's just hard, it's hard to say, but that's, that was my, that was my initial, initial thought that sometimes it's just the hard, the hard choices you have to make. So thank you so much for the work and the, and the shifting sands and making sure nobody's completely cut out, but it's all just like lots of pivots and I'm sure it was not easy. And I can't wait to dive into this 800-page, thousand encyclopedia. I'm kidding. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Schaefer.
I'll just finish my quick thought about the cuts and then end with one other thought. But I think in these times where we're asking for a 10% increase, we started with higher than that, right? We ended lower than that. We're going to come back with a higher request again. I really think it shows fiscal responsibility to the public for us to have cuts. I mean, if we're consistently upping it without, in these times that the face, that the city is facing, we, we can't, we can't have, you know, any say, we have, can't look to what they're doing. We have to look to what we can do and the control that we have. And so for me, from my perspective, I think that that gives integrity to our ask, is that we, you know, hey, we're going to ask for another eight, but guess what? This is what we, this is what we cut and this is what we plan to hopefully add back in at some point in time. That's just my overall umbrella when we talked about cuts. And again, yeah, because I think there's significant costs to the public that we are presenting. So if we're not taking, it's not just the financial ask, it's also the actual on-the-ground ask that we have of the public in this budget two-year cycle of closing ICE rinks, reducing hours. I think we've got to look at some cuts that we can make ourselves, that we show that we're taking the pain to. And I just want to say thank you, the outdoor supervision pilot, all that is really exciting.
All right, seeing all their lights. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Very exciting and we will get you, a lot of response and hurrah, staff on your gold medal. So I will go now to petitions and communications. Now I'm going to start with Commissioner Alper.
Pass.
Commissioner Olson.
Pass.
Commissioner Rucker.
Pass.
Commissioner Thompson.
Pass.
Commissioner Menz.
Pass.
Commissioner Schaefer.
I'll just mention that little things have big impacts in our park system. And I want to tell the staff one little thing that happened. The repaving of a bunch of, a circular path in Loring Park has made a big impact for my community. I can't tell you how many thank yous I have gotten, how many stuff on social media, people taking pictures of the demo and the dirt path and then taking pictures of the roller thing coming out. I, I really think we've got to celebrate, and I just want to iterate to you that I just say thank you for that because it, those, that, for that dollar amount, we, our reputation went like this. And I, and so I, I just want to keep telling ourselves, reminding ourselves, it's the pavement, it's the grass, it's, those are the things that people walk on and use every single day. And so for a hundred and whatever thousand dollars that was, it was fantastic. So I hate to remove budget from pavement asset manager, category.
Okay, just three quick reminders. Next, I'm so sorry. God, gosh. Okay, all right, are you passing? You are? Oh, I'm so sorry. Just three quick reminders, next Tuesday, we have a joint meeting with the school board. It will be right here. There is a ribbon cutting tomorrow for Bryn Mawr Meadows. And then the last thing, please, everybody make sure to vote for the ballot measure. Be sure to do a yes vote. Please, please, please. Okay. Thank you on that. I adjourn at 7:35.